The upcoming session is a huge opportunity for the state of Oregon to really turn the page away from the Great Recession. The current two-year budget we have in the state has brought us back to some normalcy in terms of resources, a stronger KFO budget than we had had in the past during the recession. But we can do better in this state. And the priority for myself and many of us in the upcoming session is to make sure that opportunity and prosperity is actually a reality for as many Oregonians who desire it. And in this state, we have too many folks who come out of the Great Recession, working but not making enough to make ends meet. We don't have the kind of jobs that people would like to have. We need a stronger public education system, trying to make sure we are investing in our public education system as the lateral opportunity that we all know and need. So we have a lot of things on the horizon. And what you'll see on my sheet is just a real quick set of highlights. There are a lot of things that we will be taking up in the upcoming session, and that will become apparent through your questions. In addition to working on issues related to opportunity in the middle class around wages and leave and creating jobs across the state, we will also be looking at a transportation package, trying to put a transportation package that will affect the entire state. We haven't had one for six years. We should do these in six-year increments. It's time for another one, to make sure we're maintaining our infrastructure, expanding what we need, making sure we have access to different forms of transportation and multimodal transportation infrastructure. So that'll be a very large discussion in the coming session that the Senate President and I will be leading. You'll see on my sheet some priorities around childcare for working parents. I have a bill, Hospital 2015, that will expand and strengthen the employment-related daycare program, which helps working families have access to subsidies to help them afford childcare and be able to work. I will continue my work around air quality. We were able to obtain some money last year for some new monitoring devices in North Portland to deal with the air quality issue. Thank you. We're going to continue to support that funding, the staffing is needed to enforce. On the bottom of my sheet, if you haven't picked one up yet, please do. There's a little blurb at the bottom about reporting a nuisance odor. The state, through the efforts of many, have improved their protocols for addressing nuisance odor complaints. And there is currently an open investigation around the Swan Island industrial area for the neighborhoods who live above Swan Island. And we want to know if people are smelling anything, and it's bothering you. So there's a way to report it. Please, to the degree you can report it in real time, I know a lot of people will like saving them all up and input them all at once. Try to do it in real time, because that's obviously investigators know and come out at the time to see if they can also witness the odors that you're experiencing. Police profiling, not surprisingly, will be a high topic of interest in the session. I'm particularly watching a set of racial profiling bills that I think we have a good chance of passing this session, to not only track and define what racial profiling is, but to allow the Attorney General to have the authority to go after law enforcement agencies that have a pattern of abuse. So we'll be working on that. And after that, least supportive housing. And many of you know it's really tough to afford a place to live in this city and around the state. So we'll be working on new ways to finance supportive housing, look at different ways, certainly support our rental assistance programs for people who are having trouble making a rent. And then also lift the state branch on inclusionary zoning, so we can give that full effect.
I will be working on making insurance play by the same rules as any other business. Some of you may not know this, but insurance is the only line of business, the only line of business, that is exempt from the state's unlawful trade practices act. And what that means to you is that if an insurance company is engaged in fraud or unfairly denies your claim, you are, by all practical means, prevented from private private action against that insurance company. The Attorney General is prohibited from suing insurance companies that engage in fraud. So I want to balance the scales a little bit there. And then also, as Chair of the Public Safety Subcommittee, I will be looking very closely at changing the way Oregon deals with police deputies. And lastly, I want to highlight a big advance that we made in the last legislative session. Oregon became only the second state in the nation to pass racial impact statement law. And that is a very big milestone, only the second state. Iowa was first, Oregon the second. No other state beyond these two have done it. And what that will mean to you is that you'll have, as citizen lobbyists, another tool in your toolbox to tell the legislature, we need to hit the pause button on this particular sentencing bill or this particular child welfare bill. Because it seems to me that if we agree that minority overrepresentation in the criminal justice system and the child welfare system is not a good thing, then the first thing we should do is not make it worse. Am I right? And I can tell you, when these sentencing bills come before us, and they're almost always to increase sentences for this or that offense, you can tell on their face who they're going to affect. This will give you an option to say, okay, Mr. and Ms. legislator, I can tell you to vote yes or vote no on a particular bill, but now I can also say, hey, let's hit the pause button, let's get some data from the Criminal Justice Commission. Would you please submit a racial impact statement request? And as long as there are two people requesting it, one from each party, that is something that the legislature can now do, hit the pause button, take a look at the data. We can still pass it if we decide that the public interest is overwhelmingly in favor of this. But it might also say, you know, maybe instead of increasing the sentence, if you are, quote, a member of a criminal street gang, and we know that that's going to enhance minority over representation, maybe we can come up with another solution that could improve public safety. So with that, I'm just so delighted that you all are here and excited to get into the next questions. And let's hand it off and give some great appreciation to my state representative, Representative Lou Frederick.
Well, I want to get to the questions as well, but I do want to, if you haven't seen it, there's a list of some of the bills that I've been involved with, that I've been involved with for this session. There's a theme here, the speaker started it off in terms of the profiling bills. I really appreciate the support she's given to that. We will have something through the session, I think, because we have, it is a requirement. And people have asked me why this is such a high priority. It's one word: first. The other thing is, for me, it's a personal situation in some ways. I don't know of a single black man in the country who has not had to deal with concern when they see the blue lights behind them. For me, it's, I always immediately think, am I going to die today? So this is a, this is something that we're going to have, we're going to have some discussion of, and you will see a number of bills. There are three bills right off the top, 2001, 2002, and 2003. Again, thank you, Speaker, for making sure that that's the case. I have several other bills that deal with excessive use of force, that deal with cameras, both the cameras on, potential cameras, body cameras, as well as the ability for citizens to take pictures of what's going on and not be accused of. I also have a bill that I'm particularly interested in. I want to have a regular psychological evaluation of every law enforcement officer. Once a year, once every 18 months, once every two years. Every cop that I know can tell me about a PTSD experience that they're in, and they always say that they aren't affected by it. Well, they are, and everyone knows that. They know that it is a stigma to go and talk with a psychologist, and I want to try to make sure that that's a multiple stigma. So those are just some of the bills that we're dealing with there. I have several bills dealing with the student records privacy. Right now, we will, there's a real question about who has access to the records, the computer records of students. For how long? We are now keeping records as far as as old as, as young as, pre-kindergarten in some cases. And we need to find out who has those, who has access, who can control them, who can correct them. Those are some of the issues that I want to deal with. I have a number of other bills that we can talk about at some point, but one in particular that apparently the city is also involved with, and that is to make sure that as we monitor for minority women and emerging small businesses, we actually monitor, if a contractor says that they are, in fact, using minority women and emerging small businesses as subcontractors, let's go and find out who they are. And if they can, and if we're more important, if they aren't, what can we do about it? Because there's no penalty at this point. And we need to try to find somewhere to really have an impact on that. So those are just some of the bills, and I can talk about brownfields and a number of other things as well at some point, but let's get to the questions. Thank you for being here.
So again, if you haven't had a chance to fill out a card and drop it in the bowl out front, raise your hand. Amanda, it's Shields's office, and I think Sue with Representative Frederick's office, and Andy from my office. Everyone can help you get a card, wave your hand, get cards to those folks with their hands up, and the bowl with the cards in it that we have right now. We'll get started here as we give the first set of cards. Megan, if you want to come on down. Round of applause for Megan Moore from PCC, please. So what we're going to try to do is, we normally get cards on, you know, multiple cards on one topic, so we try to put them all together and answer the question. If we're not getting it right, I'm sure you'll let us know if you can quite answer the question. And we'll just deviate up here. So the question is, how can we help pass police accountability legislation this session and prevent it from being watered down? That's the question. Chip, if you want to start off?
Well, I think the key is that we have a Speaker who cares about this stuff. And we have, you know, Democrats are often divided on issues of public safety, to say the least. And so what I found with the racial impact statement bill is the reason I was able to negotiate a good bill with my colleague at the House Judiciary Committee is I knew that Speaker Kotek had my back in that negotiation. So when, you know, different ideas were coming forward that I think were designed to water down or kill the bill, I could say, no, I just can't go along with that, but here's what I can go along with. I think having a Speaker there is going to be critical. But I think the other thing is, for those of you who have relatives that might live in other parts of the state, encourage them to come down and tell their story to their legislators. If they're in Aloha, if they're in Beaverton, if they're in Eugene, make sure that they're also reaching out, because all three of us are sold on the topic. But we are only three votes at the end of the day.
Thank you. Let me suggest to you, there are a couple of other reasons, things that we need to do, and a reason that I think we're going to actually get something done for this session as well. The Speaker's support is just critical, but also the support and the research that's being done by the Center for Intercultural Organizing. CIO is based just over here, but they have managed to get around the state and talk with people, and they're still holding testimonials and hearings and meetings around the state. So they're talking with folks in Metford and in Pendleton and in Coos Bay and Eugene. And they're getting those stories there, because one of the problems I had in the past in talking with my colleagues was that they thought that the issue of police profiling was simply a Portland issue. And they would say, well, we don't need to worry about it, it's just Portland, why don't you fix things in Portland? Center for Intercultural Organizing has gone around the state and discovered, as I knew, and I discovered several years ago, or many, many years ago, that this was an issue across the state. The Native American folks, the Latino folks, the Asian community, a number of people, the trans community, a number of other folks, were being harassed on a regular basis and being profiled. They have got those records, they've got those things now down in a testimonial. That's going to be very common, because it's not just a metro area issue. So I would encourage you, as the Senator said, I would encourage you to make sure that your friends and neighbors across the state let their representatives know that this is not something that is just located in Portland. That will help a great deal. And then I would also encourage you to get in touch with Ecumenical Ministries of Oregon, Center for Intercultural Organizing, the AMA, the American, Alabama Minister of Defense. All of them are going to be having a number of lobby days in Salem. If you can come and be there for those things, or just talk with other folks, it will help a great deal.
Our next question is, what revenue enhancement tax policies have a chance in the next session?
So in the revenue discussion, thank you for the question. The governor last year had initiated a conversation between business and labor leaders to try to figure out how we get at that longstanding problem of having a more stable and adequate revenue structure. And at this point, we don't have a particular proposal out of that work. We might in the future, but right now, the legislature is not looking at a broad revenue tax restructuring effort. But what we are looking at is some, there are some very specific things we need to do around revenue this coming session. One of them is to look at the tax credits that we have. We set in place a few years ago that every tax credit would get a review every six years. The ones that, that's a range of things. So the ones that are up this year for review in the tax credit world are ones that we all like a lot. The Working Family Childcare Credit, Earned Income Tax Credit are the two biggest ones. And to renew them, it would cost about $70 million. So we have to figure out how to pay for those first, so that is a priority. We might look at other tax expenditures, tax credits on the books, maybe shave those a little to help pay for those. There will be some work done to pay for the tax credits we like and maybe get some money from other places. The other issue that's going to be addressed is resolving the Conway decision. There was a decision a couple of years ago by the courts, there was a company called Conway, who challenged how we had set the corporate minimum tax here in the state, remember passing as voters, corporate minimum tax, saying, at some level, every corporation is going to pay a minimum tax. Well, Conway said, I have all these tax credits that reduces my liability, so I don't have a corporate minimum anymore. That's not what voters intended, but I think so. We'll be looking at the Conway decision and adjusting that, and that could raise some revenue for the state that we could put into essential services. So those are the types of things we're looking at right now. There will certainly be proposals around different ways to adjust the tax structure. It's a little, you know, it's a little hard for me to see how much traction they will have, but what you will see in the budget that we will be working on is though, even though I think we're going to have a good budget coming out of this session, it is not the budget that we, as Oregonians, want to make, the game-changing investments we need in public education, all the way from early childhood to higher ed. It's not the budget that we know would help us do more preventive work in the state. So I fully expect by next year that we'll be having a conversation about taxes, potentially on the bound in 2016, because we really do have to have an honest conversation in the state about what do we care about and are we willing to pay for it so we can have the state we want.
She's got better handling than.
Notice they ditched the taxes, you guys. Next question.
All right, this is one that had several versions of it, but where do the three of you stand on the $15 an hour minimum wage proposal?
All right, there you go, people. Thank you for being here. Please keep up your efforts. As you know, there's a bill in the, there are several bills in the legislature around minimum wage. I believe if you work full-time, you should not live in poverty. But the minimum wage discussion is coming this year. I'm very pleased that we have a $15 an hour bill. We also have one that is saying if you work full-time, you don't live in poverty, so we tax it to the federal poverty level, and that one, I think, works out at about $12.50, closer to $13 an hour. We also have, we also have a bill that says, well, if we can't figure it out, we're going to lift the preemption that now exists. Preemption meaning the state government says, Portland can't do it. Well, if we can't figure it out, we'll lift the preemption. So for me, I have not set on a number. I would like to go as high as possible and as quickly as possible, and that's what I can say right now.
I agree with Speaker Kotek, and I'm proud to be a chief co-sponsor of a $15 an hour minimum wage bill as well. As well as the bill that lifts the preemption.
Last session, there was a bill about diverting leftover money from lawsuits unclaimed to legal aid groups. It lost by one vote in the Senate. What do you think the chances are this is happening?
That bill is scheduled for the first day of session on Monday. It is going to be heard in the Judiciary Committee at 3 o'clock on Monday, and, you know, it's unfinished business. I'd like to move it quickly.
I think it'll pass this time.
I'm repeating myself, yes.
What are you doing at the state level to address climate change? Move away from fossil fuels and promote related job development?
Thank you for that question. The first issue, the first order of business on the climate change is another bit of unfinished business, which is finally lifting and removing the sunset on the Clean Fuels Program. Many of you know that in 2009, we established a low-carbon fuel standard for the state of Oregon, and there was a sunset put on it, part of the negotiation at that time. We have initiated rulemaking in the state. We want to build a clean fuels industry here in the state. We need to lift the preemption, just get started with the Clean Fuels Program, so that is issue number one. I know, thank you, there's also some other work being done around helping us not be the battleground for dirty diesel engines from other states. And, I mean, those are the two, I think, most clear ones that I've been seeing. Chip, would you?
I think you hit the head.
Those are, those are part of it. The diesel situation is not a, it's not a theoretical issue for us. We live, we are right now in one of the most polluted areas in the state. This is, this is one of the concerns. We have the highest asthma rate right here because of that kind of particular matter. So that's something we need to be doing directly. But I'm also concerned about some of the other approaches. I'm trying to work with a number of folks in the electric car industry, try to get folks using those cars who can use, and get them affordable, and people, get people to understand how important they could be in helping them. So I'm working on both, trying to get people to use them. I've suggested a couple of things like making sure that several of our high-profile people in the community are, in fact, driving electric cars rather than a price of $3,000. But I'm also suggesting that we put in, we have warehouse space, it's basically present warehouse space in north, north of Portland. It could easily be small manufacturing for the 15 electric cars, electric vehicles that are presently made in the state of Oregon. And we need to have, if we can find a way to both provide jobs for folks who are helping with the electric car industry and make it a supply chain that is based in Oregon rather than Michigan, California, Wisconsin, we can start having an impact on a much larger scale. So those are, those are some of the quotes we're talking.
Two other small things. I was proud to be on the Transportation and Economic Development Subcommittee of Ways and Means Last Amendment, where for the first time, we approved the ability to take Connect Oregon funds and use those for alternative modes of transportation like bike lanes and bypass, which was a big step for Oregon. Thank you. Lastly, I want to make sure everybody knew that we now have a commuter train that can go in a reasonable manner from Portland to Salem, and so I'm going to be taking that every chance that I get, departing at Union Station at 6:00 a.m., unfortunately, and getting down to Salem around 7:20. So if you, that, you know, in the past, departed Portland at 2:15 in the afternoon and came, you know, came back at 10:00 at night or something, it was ridiculous. So I wanted to make sure you knew about that, go by train.
It sounds like Senator Shields would invite you to join him on the train. On that note, one of the things, if train travel and commuter rail is really important to you, one of the things that we have in our governor's budget as well, the co-chairs' budget framework, is some money to help Amtrak. They lost a bunch of federal money, and to keep that Amtrak line operating, we're going to have to put some state dollars into it. So hopefully that's part of the final transportation funding we have. So if that matters to you, let your legislators know, let your friends from other parts tell us, because we don't want to lose our Amtrak service. We obviously want to expand it, but we have to at least maintain what we have.
Several questions, we're on the same topic, but what is your position on the 2015 bill, House Joint Memorial II, that puts Oregon on record calling for amendment to the Constitution to overturn Citizens United?
I supported, we tested it last time, and we should pass it again.
I was initially, frankly, very skeptical about some things. I didn't want us to start, because this particular resolution calls for a constitutional And I misunderstand, I misunderstanding something?
Article five.
Article five convention. The Article five convention is, there was still a concern for me initially about whether that would allow folks to insert other issues into the discussion. And that's apparently, from what I can gather, that is not the case. So at this point, I have a tendered support for, if I, I am concerned if, because although there are some legal scholars who say that is the case, there are others who are concerned about it. And I want to make sure that we are in fact not going to be along with them in there. Citizens United needs to be overturned. It has to be very quick. I want to make sure that it's done and done well, so that we don't have to start, that we aren't dealing with other issues that some folks would love to introduce, that I've seen in terms of some of the constitution convention discussions. Because I'm one of those weird people that I get some of the other, the other side literature that says, let's see if we can do this and sneak this in. Yeah, I don't want that.
What bills concerning veterans are you planning on working on this time?
I don't have any personal bills on that issue. I met with our new Chair of the House Committee on Veteran Services and Emergency Preparedness, Representative John Lively from Springfield. He is a veteran. We had a really good conversation about making sure we are maximizing the federal dollars that come to our veterans, first of all. There's been a lot of work on that. We can support that by supporting county service officers and other state-level, state-supported employees and communities to help connect veterans with their federal services and benefits. One of the issues that I had talked to him about directly was, what can we do as a state to better serve our women veterans? Because of, unfortunately, widespread sexual abuse that has been happening, PTSD, and then also just the differences that returning veterans who are women might have. And we're, we'll be working on that. I don't think we have a specific bill yet, but if you have, if you are a veteran or have family members who are veterans, you have, you have your ideas, I think there's a real opportunity to look at new ideas to support our veterans and our current service companies.
Part of the Public Safety Subcommittee of Ways and Means, we have six or seven budgets within that Subcommittee, but one of them is the Military Department. And oddly, the Veterans Administration is part of the Transportation and Economic Development Subcommittee. But I'm pleased that in the last legislative session, we secured some money that Multnomah County could go for and improve its funding. The Multnomah County veterans take it on the chin in the funding formula, and we were able to improve that situation. I will also be looking at making sure that a reentry program continues through the Military Department, basically the national. We, sorry. And one last thing, you know, the best ideas for bills usually come from people just like you. And I got an email from somebody who said, you know, we should really do something to keep local law enforcement agencies from militarizing themselves. And so I'll be introducing, so I'll be introducing a bill that will prohibit municipalities from accepting surplus from the Department of Defense.
I don't have anything specifically, but we, I will be supporting the efforts of the city of Portland. They are trying to make sure that we no longer have homeless veterans. So, they, I will be helping, trying to help in whatever way I can to make sure that that happens. They, they talk about that, and they're proud of where, the direction they're taking. Let's see if we can make sure that we no longer have anyone who is served sitting out or having, being forced to help on the streets. That's not exactly, for anybody. As someone, as a friend of mine put it, who was talking with some folks in, in Finland, they were asked, how do they deal with homeless kids in Finland? And, and the, the, they talked about that, that we have children who go, don't, they leave school and they don't have a place to really to stay, they are staying in cars, they don't get a chance to clean up, they don't get a chance to do their homework. She asked that question to the Finnish Minister of Education, and Finnish Minister of Education said, well, we give them homes. Pretty, pretty simple idea. But we do really have to start just thinking about how, the basic way to deal with that kind of issue.
And if you came in late and you didn't get a card to put a question to the pool, raise your hand, I think most people have gotten their cards. If not, wave, and then we'll get you a, no card to fill out.
All right, there have been several questions similar to this one. But so, thank you for your support for House Bill 2564, which would lift the statewide ban on inclusionary zoning. How do you imagine north and northeast Portland could benefit from a strong inclusionary housing program once the ban is lifted?
Well, the good thing is, I believe the mayor of his state, the city address yesterday, said he will support inclusionary zoning as an option for Portland, which is the first step. So, I think we should thank the mayor for that. Because even if we say local communities, go use this, local communities have to go use it. So, it's helpful for our city leaders to know that that's a priority for you, and it is on the city of Portland's legislative agenda. So, good job, the city's part. You know, I don't know, in north and northeast Portland, it does provide the opportunity for new development to have some affordable housing, great affordable housing set-asides, similar to what we're doing with urban renewal areas. The only place we can currently do it is urban renewal money can be, you know, 30% affordable housing target that we have here in the city. I think it depends on what development in north and northeast Portland is going in. Certainly, we have a lot on the max lines. I do think it's important, I think it might have more impact in other parts of the city, to be honest. One of the things that I'm worried about, contemplating how the state can be helpful in addition to inclusionary zoning, is what's happening in our community. Starter homes that have been in the neighborhood for a long time are being torn down, and they're being replaced by very, very large houses that are very expensive. And so, not only are we using, thank you, we're losing housing stock for like first-time homebuyers. Because that, those aren't first-time homebuyer homes. I looked at how much they are in my, in my street, and I'm like, I'm never going to make it. But then we're pushing, wow, so we really have to look a little harder at our anti-identification efforts here. I think some of that, if you're borrowing some of the money that the city is allocating for affordable housing in the interstate or renewal area, it talks about helping current homeowners renovate their homes or repair them. I think that's, keeping people in the homes they have is great. So, let's do that first. And then also, we have really fallen back on our first-time homebuyer supports at the state level, first, you know, down payment assistance and those things. It is really tough to get a house right now unless you have cash or you have some incredible equity in your current home. So, I think some of those efforts, as well as I see, are going to be really important for north and northeast. Otherwise, the face of the community is really going to change in our next five years, given the change in the house, in the housing market.
I want to echo what the Speaker said about keep people in the homes. One of the things that I discovered as we were knocking, knocking on doors during the election is frankly, the concern. I could tell which homes had been there for a while, and, and the real concern about some of the stairs going up and down. I have a, my, my back was, went out a while ago because of an accident. Going up and down some of the stairs in some of the homes in my neighborhood was really a concern. There was no way for some of those folks to get repairs and maintenance. The city has decided to put a small amount, I mean, four million dollars into a fund to try to help with some of those repairs. But we need to go out and find some way to do that. Now, here's another aspect of that. Some of those repairs could be done by people who live in the neighborhood, which are a job for the neighborhood. Let's make sure that we connect those things as well. So, I'm, I'm looking at that. I, we have to figure out how we're going to not only bring, make sure that we have housing or loan from folks, but frankly, we need to make sure that we are actually getting jobs for people. I want to have, that is not an either-or situation. We need to have both. And, and that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to find a way to, not balance it, but try to make sure that we have both in this, in the, in the community. So, that's what I'm looking at. It's not just the housing, it's not just one, one thing, but it's, but we've got to work on both.
Going back to what I said before about how the best ideas for legislation almost always come from people just like you. I had a meeting with one of our neighbors yesterday, generally Fridays are kind of my legislative days, the rest of the week I'm, I'm slumming. So, on Fridays, I pretty much meet with constituents every half hour, all day long. And one of them was a woman named Margaret O'Hartigan, and she told me about a quirk in the senior tax deferral program that is making it so that it's not making the needs of north and northeast Portland seniors. And the issue is that, one of the criteria is that the, they look at whether or not your home is above the median value in the county, which is about $260,000. And that, by, almost by definition, in north and northeast Portland these days, excludes most people. So, we're going to be looking at amending it to say, if your value of your house has increased by, you know, 50% in the last 10 years, or something that would kind of scoop up those folks who bought their house for $25,000 in 1970 and are now, the, the house is worth $350,000 to $400,000. Make sure that they can take advantage of that and not get knocked out of the neighborhood in their senior years.
One of the concerns that I have, one of the things that I run into is a group of predatory realtors and people who are going out and really preying on some of those folks who bought those homes for $20,000. They are, they are out there. I got two letters today, this week rather, from, from folks who were trying to portray themselves as being just interested in this community and wanting to move in and, and make, and a nice little picture of, with a picket fence around them. And, you know, we just want to move back into the, to the northeast Portland area. But when I look up who they were, that they are just flipping homes. And that's all that they were doing. And they've, and they've been doing this for, for some time. They will identify themselves as, as, you know, wanting to bring their little corgi back into northeast Portland.
Are you not my corgi?
But they are in fact, just, they are, they're setting it up to, to be predatory realtors. And they, and this is a, a real problem. We need to find a way to, to deal with these folks. We, we did that to some extent in, in Portland in the early 90s successfully. They have decided that they have a new route to do that, and it's a real concern. Real concern.
You can have more budget consumer protection advocates up here. There's also another bill to rein in the marketing of reverse mortgages. Have you all seen those commercials? You're up way too late and watching the wrong channel to do that. But yeah, I was like, get a reverse mortgage, it'll be great for you. Well, if you get a reverse mortgage, particularly if you're a senior, and then try to apply for the senior property tax bill, you can't, right? So, there's a whole lot of issues on the reverse mortgages and how people are getting taken advantage of. So, watch for those bills as well. And if you have other ideas and chipsets, let us know. We want to stand up for homeowners and keep people in their own.
All right. Do you support tobacco retail licensing? And they reference House Bill 2546.
It's unbelievable they can talk about that.
I do. I think it's fascinating that we don't know who sells cigarettes in the state, really. And, you know, if we're going to maintain, and the reason why is, I don't, we can do a lot more in the state to keep tobacco products out of the hands of young people. And it's hard to enforce that if we don't know who sells it. So, I think just knowing who sells tobacco products would be a great start.
I would agree.
Same here.
Anything you want, Karen.
What legislation is there to prevent discriminatory practices by employers in the job market when people have criminal records?
Well, some of you know, the main reason I ran for office was because I was frustrated that it wasn't trending more on its prison system than it was on community colleges and higher education. I used to run an outfit called Better People, which was a living wage employment and counseling program for people who were in recovery from addiction and people who've been in trouble with the law. I do know that there have been some efforts to have the state ban the box. So, that, that would be, it wouldn't automatically knock somebody out in the first round, and, you know, they would still be able to discuss criminal history and then what's different now in a job interview, but it wouldn't be the first thing that the employer would see. Those are the, the main things that I see. As part of the Public Safety Subcommittee, we will also be focusing to make sure that reentry services are well funded.
Can we go to this in a different direction? We know that people of color, especially young men of color, are disproportionately arrested or profiled and then arrested and then sentenced for, for offenses that are not the case with the majority population. One of those seven offenses that we have seen a lot of in the past has been marijuana possession in Salem. And because of that, those folks are, non-violent folks are, have now, have been in prison and have records, and as a result, cannot get housing, jobs, or, or education. I have, I have, it's not, it's not introduced yet, but I have a bill that will be, I will, I plan on introducing that will call for the expungement of non-violent. And this is, this is not because it's just one little simple issue. For me, it's a much larger issue. If you can't get education, job, and housing, how are you going to be putting together a family? How are we going to have a chance to say to whoever you're with, your, your community, your family, that you are able to be successful with those things? This is an issue that I think we need to be doing, especially now that there are some folks who do not look like those folks who have been in prison, who are going to make a lot of money from marijuana. So, that's, that's what I'm, that's part of what I'm, what I'm talking about. That's, that'll be one of the bills that will be introduced, and the Marijuana Committee, yes, it's the joint committee. And out here, there's a little rim shot there. In college, I was on a committee that dealt with liquor, sex, and drugs. So, think about those officials who were there. And we, we really need to try to find a way within this committee to figure out how we're going to handle this, the, both, the community, the people who have been involved in the past, and get them to have a fresh start.
Definitely. On the ban the box bill, I just, I want to bring it up just one more point on that, is that it's really become apparent since the recession, why ban the box is more important than ever. I've had several constituents who, they worked in the same place for 20 years, they lost their job during the recession, and they have some kind of criminal record, usually not a big one, but it pops up in background checks when they go to find a new job. They never had to deal with this for the 20 years they worked somewhere else, but now it's a barrier. And employers are always a little skittish to be told what to do, but think about this. We're not saying you can't take that into account, but it should not be the first criteria to throw someone out of an application pool before you give them a look at their, their talents and their ability to do the job. That might be a barrier for that person sometime about getting certain types of jobs, but it shouldn't keep them out of the application pool before they even get to the next stage. And that's what ban the box will do. The city and the county have supported it, and that will be a statewide effort, and hopefully we can get that done. Because that is really inhibiting people from just getting back, frankly, into the workforce right now. So, thank you.
This is, we appreciate the safe support of education, especially early childhood. The three of you are supportive of all Oregonians. Can we count on you to continue to look out for the elderly disabled of all ages and the voiceless who have few advocates?
Yes. I would, I actually, I would correct that just a tad. I have to say, some of the most organized advocates in the bill are the folks who stand up for seniors and people with disabilities. So, keep that up. I feel you're, you have a lot of good representation there on those issues. However, I think anything that's not fancy and, and costs a lot sometimes gets the bottom of the list. And I've always been a human services advocate. The human services budget that's starting off in the co-chairs' framework is a good budget, but we can improve it, and everyone needs to come and help us understand what's the best way to prioritize our dollars. So, every person who has a vulnerability is assured to be able to, you know, live safely, live healthily, and we have a lot of work to do there. But whether, I don't think it's neither or. I think we can fund early childhood in the state and, and make sure our seniors and our people with disabilities are well taken care of. So, we have to fight for both. It's not an either-or conversation, and I'm committed to both.
One thing I wanted to call your attention to also, that I would love to get your help on, is raising the bar on the abysmal quality of fostering in the state. It seems like every time we turn around, there's another four-million-dollar lawsuit about, about a foster kid getting hurt under our care, state's care, and it's got to stop. The training and support for foster parents needs dramatic improvement. Just join the board of the Oregon Foster Parent Association. My wife and I are foster parents. And so, we're, we're just getting our feet underneath us as an organization, but we really want to raise the bar on the quality of fostering. I anticipate that I'll put in some funding requests for a rural and urban pilot project to skill up foster parents and also work on some of the behaviors for more challenging foster kids. Really trying to make every Oregon foster home a true home of healing. Don't we owe that to them?
This is, these issues are things that are basically my, my concerns, family concerns. I'm looking particularly at the issue revolving around mental health and how we are, how we handle those issues. We have the possibility, real possibility, in fact, there are work on having a consolidation of the mental health emergency system of the county, and it's going to be in the district from the old Holiday Park hospitals, the plan. I think we will, that will help some things. In my family, I, my, I have a family member who has been in every mental health ward in the, in the region over the last 20 years, and she's struggled a great deal, and she's now doing relatively well, so I'm pleased with that. But I see her friends and other folks who are struggling as well. We don't have the facilities, the people, the, the capacity to really address not only the adults, but especially the kids, and we need to find some way that we're going to do that. So, that's what I'm going to be working on, as part of helping to convene the mental health conference at the, at the.
There have been several on this topic. Portland has similar problems to the Michael Brown case in Ferguson, Missouri. Can there be legislation to let, to appoint an independent prosecutor in cases of police use of the main law force?
Yes, there can be. There are several bills that have been introduced. I've introduced several of them. There are, we are talking about the need, I, I think, my, my preference at this particular point, and I'll give you my, my, my preference, and that is that we have a system where we do not allow the, anyone who lives, who's working in the jurisdiction of an incident to be allowed. the ones doing the investigation of the incident. So it should not be someone from the county, for instance, doing the investigation of what takes place in Portland. It should not be necessarily somebody from Washington County, I believe. You need to have somebody who's an expert in the investigation, doing the investigation. And I like, like the idea of it being under the auspices of the Attorney General's Office rather than necessarily a special prosecutor. But I have also introduced a bill calling for a special prosecutor. We need to have some kind of option, we can in fact have someone who is going to be independent doing the investigation of any, any incident. And so there are several different approaches that we can take on that, and I want to see what happens as we talk in the legislature, how we work some things out. Cost, does a special prosecutor require a cost to the Attorney General's Office? Maybe not. If the Attorney General's Office is the coordinator for something like that, the investigation was going to have to take place anyway, so the county that it's involved in would have to be paying for it, and they should be paying for that investigation. So I want to have us look at those particular approaches, because we need to have some kind of independent investigation system for any incident that takes place in the state of Oregon.
There are also would be several approaches on how grand juries operate, and one will, I think, has a good chance of passing. Right now, we have no idea what's happening in the grand jury rooms in the state. Oregon is one of the few states where grand jury proceedings are not recorded, so there will be a bill to record those. I think that's minimally necessary, it's the minimum amount that we need to do under a jury. I'm also introducing a bill to get a discussion going about whether or not the grand jury is the proper forum for police deadly use of force cases generally. You know, I grew up in St. Louis, my ex-girlfriend lived in Florissant, about a mile away from downtown Ferguson, and people of color have been very, very hard in St. Louis, and it's not, you know, the problems are, Portland's a little bit different, but, you know, the same problems are here too. And so what, what I've heard is that before, these kinds of issues were addressed in open court in what they call preliminary hearings in front of a judge, where the public can put eyes on it, I assume that victims' families can also introduce evidence, and take, I think taking the grand jury proceedings out of the shadows would be a good step. So that's something that's going to probably take, you know, a full session to even vet, it might not pass this time, but I think it's a discussion that we need to have. Our grand jury proceedings is the best place for these things to happen, behind closed doors, I'm not convinced that they're.
I support all those comments.
Will any of you sponsor a bill that are defining, as it relates to employment, permanent versus temporary versus limited duration, year-round versus seasonal versus intermittent?
Is Ellen here? Ellen asked this question in the meeting. I don't know. I do think how we define employees, employment law is a really tricky thing, but it's really important for protecting people on the job, particularly when the employer gets creative. So I don't know the answer to that question. I have not seen any legislation in that regard, and if you can get us more information, I think that would be helpful. We certainly have a strong Business and Labor Committee this, this session, and who will be willing to take up things that might be more controversial, we just need some language to narrow that to something we can take up right now.
And I think all of us have a pretty liberal policy when it comes to helping constituents introduce legislation. Doesn't mean that we're going to, you know, fight for your idea, you know, because we can only fight so many battles, but, you know, Ellen, if you wanted to come down and talk with Amanda, I'd be happy to introduce a bill at your request and get it into the pipeline so that we can have that discussion. I think what's frustrating about the legislature is that 90% of the bills are either by corporate interests or state agencies, and I think people should have a chance to get their stuff through as well.
Well, you know, I think this, I haven't seen, you were going to, you gave me something last time, as I recall, but, yeah, so I'd like to, you gave up on me or something this time, but let me see, let me see the bill again and see what we can put together, okay?
Oregon has adopted Employment First, focusing on having people with disabilities working in competitive community jobs. What is being done to give employers incentives to hire workers with development disabilities?
Nothing that I'm aware of. We have, we're in the midst of a pretty significant restructuring of employment services for individuals with disabilities. There was a lawsuit filed, there was an executive order from the governor trying to make sure that if you want to work and can work, that you have the opportunity to work in the community if you have a disability. It's a very complicated discussion. I'm not aware of any particular incentives. I know occasionally people will talk about tax breaks, but all I will say, if you provide more tax breaks to employers and do the right thing, that's funny we can't spend on our schools and other things. So it's a complicated thing, I'm not aware of any particular incentives, but there is a lot going on in that system, and for those of you who are connected to it, having your feedback on a regular basis on things that you're seeing would be really helpful for us.
When I was in St. Louis, I worked for an outfit called The Employment Connection, which did job placement for people who've been in trouble with the law, and at that time, there was a thing called the Targeted Jobs Tax Credit that would allow an employer to, I think, take a tax credit for 50% of the first six weeks of wages. And generally, what I saw is that it wasn't much of an incentive for anybody, that the employer would hire who they wanted to hire, and then they'd look at the incentives that were available. So it got to the point where a large corporation in hospitality industry would all but hire somebody, and then bring them to orientation before they've actually made the job offer, and then have everybody that they were going to hire go through eligibility for this tax credit, and then they'd hire them. So I just think we need to be careful when we put those kinds of incentives in place to make sure that they are not just corporate vulnerability.
This is a kind of, this particular issue is a good example of the kind of sausage making that takes place in the session. We're going to need your help, we need to know what is, what is working and what the other consequences might be, unintended consequences might be. So as often as you can, if you can, get down to Salem, please do that. If you can't get down to Salem, let us know in terms of email, and I ask that you make it an individual email, not a broadcast email, but if you can get people, get those that information to us and concerns, this is what we need, this is the kind of support we need from you.
All right, there have been several questions similar to this one, but please comment on House Bill 2922, which is healthcare for all, and is there any chance of passing?
Is that the study bill, or is that the?
There's two bills. There's a study bill that stands by the passed last night, but there's also the bill being resubmitted by number 04, how it could be all for.
So I do think, and I was talking with Representative Smith Warner about the study bill, we passed a bill to fund the study, to look at single payer here in the state of Oregon. We didn't put any money, I think the bill's coming back to actually pay for it so we can get the study done. That, I think, has good likelihood, because I think we need that information. I'll have to say, this has been an ongoing discussion around single payer. I don't know about the other bill, particularly after what happened in Ramon. I think it put a bit of a chilling effect on whether or not Oregon can take up that, you know, Ramon looked at and said they couldn't afford it, so I don't, I don't know, to be honest. The study bill probably has more likelihood than anything else.
I agree with the political landscape that I think Representative Kotek was getting at. I've been proud to be chief co-sponsor in the past and will continue to do so, be supportive. I think that generally, we need to have short-term goals and long-term goals, and I think that is a worthy long-term goal. Some of the short-term goals, in the meantime, that we've been working on in the Healthcare Committee that I also sit on, is one, making sure insurance companies justify their premium increases through the rate review process. And two, that if you actually have insurance, that they, they have incentive to pay legitimate claims, which is removing the special treatment insurance gets and being the only law business that is exempt from the unlawful practices act. And then I also introduce legislation to cap the salaries of so-called nonprofit executives in the hospitals. That should attract some interest from the Hospital Association, which is very, very powerful, incredibly powerful. But I think it does beg the question, you know, are these organizations truly nonprofit? Are, is regions truly a nonprofit? Are they behaving like nonprofit? Providence truly a nonprofit or are they behaving like, or should they be exempt from property taxes? So it's a discussion that I think we need to have.
My prognostication on whether we are going to pass that is that we probably will not pass the single payer. We will very likely pass the study bill, and I think that's appropriate. I am continuing to believe that we need to, it is going to be a step-by-step situation, but the eventual thing for me will be a single payer system. And so I think that's really, but this is a step-by-step process, and it's a matter of what we can do at just a particular point. And so I think we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep at it.
Mr. Farnum, concerned about the epidemic of gun violence in our communities. As a first step, I would like to see the loopholes that allow dangerous felons to buy guns online with no background check. What will you be doing this session to help prevent gun violence in Oregon?
Thank you for that question. I think this is a session we can, we're going to close those loopholes. Elections matter, votes matter, the makeup of the legislature matters. We have a, you know, much clearer path because of the changes after the election in terms of the number of votes in the Senate and the House. So I will support a loophole, you know, closing loopholes on background checks. I think we'll also see a bill, and I'm not sure where it is, but trying to clarify and strengthen how we handle domestic violence situations when the individual involved in the domestic violence situation has access to a gun. We're trying to figure that out. We're certainly to be better in the state of that situation. Those are the two things I'm most aware of.
Yeah, no, I would agree, and to the degree that the Public Safety Subcommittee will have some say in these, should they be determined to have a physical impact, we will be in a very good position to usher those through the ways it meets process with myself and Jennifer Williamson, both as co-chairs of the Public Safety Subcommittee.
It is a basic part of what I, one of the reasons that I've been working in the legislature is to try to find some way to do something about this, and not necessarily be, being the front person on it, but talking with folks and making sure that we have a community and folks do well in terms of organizing for it. So it's something that I hope that, I hope we do get the background checks. I do, I hope we do do something in terms of the domestic violence issue. The issue is a very simple one for me. When I was working for Portland Schools, I wanted, and people would ask me what I wanted to do, what needed to be done in terms of guns, said I wanted to have my, my kids be able to walk anywhere in the community. They shouldn't be worried about whether they go to the grocery store or the park because somebody's decided that they, have decided that they want to use a gun for whatever reason. I don't see a reason for it. I've used them in my, in my past, I know, know how to use them, but it is something that is concerning me, because most of the suicides we're dealing with are dealing with guns, and they're not for protection for those folks, they are, that is an issue. And for me, I'm dealing with a number of folks that I deal with regarding suicide issues, especially with people that are helping me, we don't need to have that additional help in that situation. So let's see if we can find some way to do something. I hope we can get background checks through this session.
What is your response to the Governor's budget inclusion of $100 million toward low-income and affordable housing?
Thank you. So with the Governor's budget, there was a $100 million proposal for building affordable housing, particularly for homeless families. $20 million, I believe, of that was using lottery-backed bonds. Lottery-backed bonds are the most flexible bonding mechanism we have in the state, and then $80 million in general obligation bonds. I'm still trying to figure out if we can use the $80 million in general obligation bonds. And here's the situation, those usually go for public assets that are built, for example, community college buildings or buildings on higher education campuses, things that are public assets. We have to figure out, if we build it with general obligation bonds, can we, what does that mean for the state? Do we own it? Do we run it? Yes, we're trying to figure that out. The mechanism, while I'm not sure we can use that particularly, the priority is right. We have to continue to look at all the different ways we've helped communities build affordable housing, and in this case, very needed immediate housing for homeless families. I'm not, I'm not sure if we can do it that way, but we're going to try as much as we can to maintain existing affordable housing through the money we spend in money to rehabilitate existing affordable housing as well as build new. So I, and I'm not sure if we can do it that way, but we're going to be looking at it pretty hard.
What concrete legislative proposals do you currently have regarding the improvement of child abuse law in Oregon?
Well, I would point back to my interest in focusing on making sure that we raise the quality of foster in the state. That's the primary focus that I'll have next time.
I know there are some, I haven't had a chance to review them. I've been, before I got elected, I was a child advocate. We can always continue to make sure that our recording and tracking and response to abuses is done well. I know, I saw something in the paper about some legislation around how we respond to appearance of physical injury, so if anyone in the audience is an expert on those issues, if you could let our offices know, I'm sure there are some, I just have a headshot to read.
I did a tour the other day of CARES Northwest, I don't know if you know that group or not. They are excellent, they are disturbing, because they have so many cases to deal with. And this is something that we will be trying to work with. There are a couple of bills that are, have been sponsored by several folks in the Department of Dordie and a couple of other folks, so I'll be working with them on some of those bills and trying to have a decent impact on child abuse issues.
How do you deal with having institutions that deal with the public and are responsible for being culturally diverse, and yet some of these institutions do not reflect cultural diversity standards that they promote or market?
That's a big question. Well, there's a couple of different issues there. There is, does your workforce, you know, reflect the diversity of the customers you're serving or the public you're serving? That is certainly an issue at the state level. We continue to work hard to diversify the state workforce to make sure it reflects the population it serves. So that's our, I mean, that is the most key thing we can do with the state, certainly for our contractors as well. One of the issues that I particularly follow is not so much about employees or employment, it's about culturally competent care in the healthcare system. When we passed the coordinated care organizations restructuring of the Oregon Health Plan, we put into place that implementing legislation, requirements to track data better of all the individuals, all the Oregon Health Plan, defined demographics and location and how they're being served, so we have better data to know if we're serving people appropriately based on their backgrounds. But also training, we passed a bill in 2013 on cultural competency and training. We could do a lot better. Interpreters, access to interpreters, a child should not be interpreting for their family in the emergency department. So those issues, I mean, I spend more time on the healthcare side, and we can do better there, but it is a priority. I've talked to the new incoming director of the Oregon Health Authority about it, there's a report in the office, and we're getting an inclusion about it, and we just need to continue to fund those things, and we're part of the health plan providers to make sure everyone has the culturally appropriate care they deserve.
I'm working with the Governor's Office now to encourage the Governor to implement disparity studies, not just in the Department of Transportation, where most people look at the challenges of minority contracting, but also, you know, other state agencies build things. DHS builds things, Department of DHS builds things, Department of Corrections builds things, OUS builds a lot of things. And, uh, they should also have disparity studies, in my view, to look at minority women on contracting practices. But then on the other side of the ledger, uh, we also need to make sure that apprenticeships are well represented in, uh, with people of color as well as women. And I was proud in the last legislative session to increase funding for pre-apprenticeship programs like instructive HOPE and Oregon Transhoppers.
Several aspects of this that I've been, uh, involved with. One is, uh, frankly, as Senator was just mentioning something, um, the Oregon Commission on Black Affairs and the Oregon Advocacy put together a research, uh, research on the number of apprenticeship programs that, and how they are, how minorities are treated in those, those programs and who comes out of them. Not a matter just who goes into them, but how many people actually come out of them as successful apprenticeships. That is a significant issue, and I just got into that, just about an hour ago, so, uh, on that program, I haven't got a chance to read it, but it shows that the, um, that it is still tied often to a good old boy system. And so we have to figure out how we deal with that. Now, the other, the other aspect is recruitment. We have had in the past for a lot of institutions, a lot of agencies, they have, uh, attempted to recruit minorities, um, to their, into their, into their works, uh, staff, but they've done it in a way that they thought was appropriate. And they would go, for instance, they'd go to the historically black colleges and universities, set up a table, hand out leaflets, and say, and then, then come back to Portland and say, well, nobody wanted to come, uh, without understanding that in many cases, a lot of the folks, because I grew up on, on, on black colleges, faculty-driven, black colleges, Southern University, Atlantic University, um, and lots of time to ski and purview, grammer, uh, a number of other places, Fort Val. So, um, fan you, if anybody's a fan of you and you. But, uh, the, uh, the fact is, many of the students who are there are there because they are not necessarily as comfortable in a community like Oregon, frankly. And, uh, and so you're going to a place where you're saying, we want you to come to Oregon. They say, how many black folks are there? And they, and how are they treated? And folks are saying, well, you know, maybe I go to Chicago instead, uh, which makes a lot of sense. But there are other places that where, where folks do in fact are in fact comfortable, and you do have small, smaller black communities and smaller Latino communities and others who will feel comfortable in the state of Oregon. So we need to be recruiting in those places. I think that would be doing. So if we can get some of those folks to be recruiting in appropriate places where there's in fact folks who would be, feel, um, comfortable here, uh, then we should be recruiting there and trying to change our, uh, our, our numbers of, of staff, minority staff, and, and finding out and getting them here because we, we need them here. The, uh, the demographics are changing in this state, and if we don't catch up, we're going to be left behind on a number of levels.
Well, our time is going to a close, so this will be the final question. Uh, Democrats now control both the House and the Senate. Why can't you change the tax structure?
So, two reasons. We have to have a supermajority vote to, um, really do any major tax work in the Oregon legislature. So while we have 18 votes in the Senate, which is the supermajority, theoretically of all 18 vote board you have it, in the House, we're at 35, you need 36. Always theoretically possible you get a Republican to help with that. Um, so sometimes it's a vote issue. But the primary issue is, um, I don't want to move anything large and impressive and then have it referred to the voters and the voters hate it and kill it. We have something called, uh, the initiative process here. And so I want to make sure that when we go there, we will win and we will have the resources we need. And at this point, it's not about the legislature, it's really about the public will to do the, to do that kind of reform. The initiative process isn't going away. People can refer things. Uh, and, um, it's just one of the realities of, of our work. It's not just about the legislature, it is about, uh, being successful at the ballot of the legislature.
What about leadership?
If it goes to the ballot and loses, we have nothing. So I'm just, I'm just, it's not just about the legislature. We can put forth good proposals, and if we have one that we need to win, we should do that. At this point, we do not have one that does what people want to do and that we can win. I'm not saying there won't be. There are a couple of ballot measures that haven't been introduced, um, to increase revenue. Um, they might be successful next year. I mean, I think, I'm a practical person. The goal is to get something that it will stick, and that is very difficult in a state that has a robust initiative system like we have.
And I think that, um, going to your question about leadership, I, I, one of the things that I was most proud of in the 2009 session was that we increased the corporate minimum tax and we increased the, uh, the, uh, taxes on those that make joint incomes over 300,000. And that was only, uh, stayed in place, the voters, uh, that that was popular, the voters approved it, and it's, can, continue to be in place and paid dividends. We're now going to get $500 million this by any, just on that, uh, those two bills alone, $500 million, which is more than we're investing in community colleges, by the way. So, um, so I, I think, you know, the, the reality unfortunately is that if you're looking for the big solution to come out of sale, and it's going to take some time for that to happen. So I think we need to look at every which way that we can cobble together what our schools need, whether it's $5 million through our tax, even though that has some problems, $500 million for, uh, for, uh, Measure 66 and 67, trimming back on, uh, corporate welfare through tax credits and tax breaks, and trying to do something about the obscene amount of money that we spend on prisons, $1.2 billion. We incarcerate about 700 per 100,000, and it's dramatically less than the state of Washington. And that's part of the reason why they invest in higher education.
Let me think, the, the, the leadership issue is quite frankly, that we need to have, the leadership is you folks. And it's not going to happen by just the likes of the leaders. This is not a, an edict from above that somehow sticks. Uh, we need to have, we need to have folks out there saying, this is what we want. We need to have you saying it constantly. It is a, it is a matter of, of repetitive message. We need to have you saying it and saying it to as many people as possible, not just the legislature, because, um, the city council, the county commission, metro, I know everybody knows who metro is, right? Sam Chase, the metro, metro council is here. But we need to have folks being, saying that to all of those people as well, and to your neighbors. And when you're standing in line at the, at the, at the grocery store, and somebody says something about, hey, I don't want to pay any more taxes. Oh, yeah? Really? Okay, then how, how do we, how do we do this? How do we, who, who, how do we, how do we have those resources? So it's, the leadership is really you. It's, yes, we're, 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 we're servers here. I don't know many of you, how many of you have served in the past, but, um, if you're, if you're serving, you're, you're relying on the wave, um, but you're standing, you're, the leaders are attempting to ride a wave as well. And if we don't have a wave, then we're, we're sitting out waiting for something to take place. So please create the wave.